14 meeting of the Riverbank Planning Commission is now open. May we have roll call please?
Sheriff Stewart, Vice Chair Hughes, Commissioner Villeboudoir.
Here.
Commissioner Dagley and Commissioner McKinney.
Here.
Now move to conflict of interest and any planning commissioner or staff member who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict. And you know what? I just have a big question about that. Item 3.1 definitely deals with all of the commissioners and I'm just wondering if that does not...
This would not count as a conflict because you're actually directed by the council to approve the rules and procedures, so it falls under the exception of necessity.
I felt that I had to get that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and with the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Individual comments should be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during this time and time cannot be yielded to another person. And under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. And please state your name and your city of reference and talk to the whole commission. Now we'll move to the consent calendar and all items on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commissioner. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. And tonight we have posting of the agenda, approval of the agenda, and approval of the minutes. May I ask for a motion please?
Motion that we approve item 2.8, item 2.9, and item 2.0.
A second.
Sheriff Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Villeboudoir.
Yes.
And Commissioner McKinney.
Yes.
Now move to the public hearing. Move to item 3.1 which is continued from the September 16th commission meeting. The rules and procedures for the City of Riverbanks Planning Commission.
Madam Chairman, Chairperson and Commission, this is an item that's been carried over a couple of different meetings. The intent was to try to have a majority of the commissioners present before we physically took action on this. I think at one point, all the commissioners have been present, so I don't know if you want us to continue this matter again or if you guys are prepared to finally take action on these rules and procedures. I guess it's up to you. So before we go through the whole presentation, I was gonna, I thought it was important to ask that question now.
She was here last week, or on the 16th she was.
At one point or another, all of your commissioners have been present, you know, just not all collectively.
We were all here when we made the changes.
Correct.
And thereafter, we kind of missed the... Yeah.
Actually, I think that if we don't work on this when the full commission is present, that we're probably going to have some regrets. It's been so long coming that I would rather just delay it one more time and have the full commission here to discuss it unless either of my fellow commissioners have a problem with that.
I have no problem with that.
I don't either.
Okay, so just let the record show that, you know, we initially brought this up in July and then we continued it to August and then we continued it to September, then we continued it to October, so now we're continuing it to November, so. All right, just want to make sure everyone knows what's going on here, kind of keep pace.
Could I ask this, could this be one of those ones that, I mean, if we can get like more of a special meeting to bring this all in to make, get this resolved?
Well, I mean, I hate to have a special meeting, you know, if I can't get five commissioners at a normal planning commission meeting, you know, we only meet once a month, so asking for a special planning commission meeting, I think, is inappropriate unless there's something urgent that's coming, coming for us. This isn't really urgent for you guys to take action on. We actually have rules and procedures that were enacted a long time ago and really all this is, is just something to kind of, you know, clean it up. We have made some administrative adjustments to those procedures based on this commission's recommendations. In my opinion, it's ready to be acted upon, but, you know, in keeping with this commission's desires to have all the commission present, all the commissioners present during the deliberations and actions, it's fine for us to continue it to the next regular scheduled meeting, which would be in November.
Going back to the question of the special meeting, I just wonder if perhaps a different, a different day and a different time could possibly...
That's, that's, that's at your discretion.
Like you stated, we've been doing it from, since July, August, September, October, now into current to November.
I look at, it's pretty much your call, but it would be...
It's more time on us, you guys, to put together the staff reports and whatnot too, so you gotta think about that as well.
We can put together and put a little time in and see what's convenient for, make sure that everyone is, is available because I understand what you're saying is that, you know, someone always probably has something they want to say or change or had some interest in it and we have been working on this for a while, but it's not, it's urgent, but it's not...
It's not earth shattering, no.
Important, so it's not...
It is important.
I mean, it's important, but it's not urgent and important.
That's fine.
And it is something that we can pass on until we get the, get the committee together so that we can make a move on it, but it doesn't stop anything because we already have plans and procedures in place.
Well, since it's advertised, I think we need to have a motion in a second and then act, take action to continue it to the next meeting, please.
Okay, I move to continue item 3.1 to November.
Second.
Stewart, Commissioner Villeboudoir.
Yes.
And Commissioner McKinney.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to item 3.2, a proposed moratorium on the establishment of and operation of new hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, e-cigarette retailers, vapor bars, and drug paraphernalia retailers.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, I'm going to have my associate, David Niskin, give the staff report on this item. I think we've got folks in the audience also that want to talk about this. This is an emergency ordinance. Planning commission has taken action as a recommendation that will be forwarded to the city council. The city council intends to consider this on the 28th of this month, both this item and the next item as well, so, David, thank you.
Thank you, John. So, Resolution 2014-014 recommends that the city council adopt an interim urgency ordinance to create a moratorium on the establishment and operation of new hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, vapor bars, and drug paraphernalia retailers. The proposed moratorium under that ordinance addresses the uses of all types of devices that provide nicotine through the act of smoking and other related activities. The moratorium extends to hookah lounges, vapor bars, and drug paraphernalia retailers and it would temporarily prohibit new hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, e-cigarette retailers, vapor bars, and drug paraphernalia retailers for an initial period of 45 days while the city further studies the matter. A number of studies have been done regarding the health impacts of both hookah smoking and e-cigarette vapor inhalation. In 2005, the World Health Organization released an advisory note regarding water pipe tobacco smoking. The term water pipe includes devices such as a hookah, by the way. The advisory note stated that individuals who engage in water pipe smoking as well as individuals exposed to the secondhand smoke of hookah pipes are at risk for the types of diseases that are caused by tobacco cigarette smoking, including cancer, heart disease, respiratory disease, and adverse effects during pregnancy. In addition, flavorings often, are often added to these devices to make the smoke and/or vapor taste sweet and packaging of these products is often designed in a way, in a way that could appeal to children. The activity of smoking hookah and e-cigaret, or e-cigarettes in a lounge space for, is for adults only, but it can affect children depending on where it is located. And in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the children of the community, businesses will need to be zoned carefully to address these impacts, hence the 45 day moratorium to study it further. The drug proliferation of drug paraphernalia retailers, hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, e-cigarette retailers, and vapor bars may adversely affect the city's ability to attract and retain business and shoppers in the city. Drug paraphernalia retailers, hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, and I keep on repeating these, e-cigarette retailers and vapor bars are often open late at night and are associated with the secondary effects of other businesses also open later such as bars and nightclubs. This impact can adversely affect infrastructure such as parking lots, landscaping, which also adversely affect the city's economic vitality. The dangers of smoking tobacco cigarettes are well established and the secondary impacts of drug paraphernalia retailers are similar to those of hookah lounges and vapor bars. The resolution in front of you recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance that will give city staff time needed to draft regulations that address the sale and use of hookah lounges, e-cigarettes, and conventional tacoba cigarette products. The moratorium is essentially a timeout for the city to evaluate the best way possible to allow these types of businesses in the city while avoiding any negative impacts from rushing into regulation without a careful study first. The city council will also review the proposed regulations and make a decision whether or not to impose the proposed moratorium in the upcoming, actually this month, later this month. The commission's recommendation to adopt the moratorium makes it clear that giving city staff, city planning staff time to properly address this issue is an important interest in the overall planning activities in the city. Now, the planning commissioners, you folks, have options regarding this resolution as well. You can either make a motion to adopt the ordinance as it is or make a motion to recommend to the city council to adopt the ordinance as it is for creating a 45 day moratorium on the establishment and operation of new hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, e-cigarette retailers, vapor bars, and drug paraphernalia retailers. You can also motion to adopt the resolution as amended by the commission and also recommending to the city council to adopt the urgency ordinance for a 45 day moratorium, as well as reject the resolution not recommending to the city council to adopt the interim urgency ordinance. That would create a 45 day moratorium. And maybe Jamie can discuss a little bit about the regulations of public notice and what it means with a 45 day moratorium and what the city can do afterwards or what their options are afterwards.
Sure. Oh, sure, of course, yeah. So, the initial moratorium is for 45 days and that, after the 45 days expires, the moratorium will expire unless the council decides to extend it and they're able to extend it for another 10 months, or 10 months and 15 days, I believe it is, and then they could also extend it for another additional year. So total, the moratorium could be two years if the council chose to extend it. However, this moratorium that is being considered would only last 45 days unless further action was taken.
Thank you. Our recommendation to staff is to, for you folks to adopt Resolution 2014-014 recommending that the city council adopt interim urgency ordinance. The interim urgency ordinance creating a 45 day moratorium on the establishment and operation of new hookah lounges, e-cigarette retailer, e-cigarette lounges, e-cigarette retailers, vapor bars, and drug paraphernalia retailers. And John and I are here available for questions as well if you have them.
I do. Is there a current timeframe on these type of establishments currently?
Well, I mean, here, the whole, the whole issue is that we've got an ordinance code that was adopted primarily back in 1967, so we've got uses, you know, that quite frankly, you know, we're talking about tonight, we've talked about last month, that really weren't contemplated by that ordinance code. So, the reality is it's kind of a timeout gives us the ability to, to develop criteria that's consistent with the industry, not only locally but statewide and how jurisdictions are dealing with these types of land uses and dealing with it as a land use issue. So, while you talk about a 45 day timeout, you know, the reality is it's going to take us a little bit more time than that. I mean, for example, with tattoo establishments, with the exception of the two businesses that the council accepted, you know, with certain terms and conditions, there are, you know, there's going to be more time and in fact, we're going to council and could be asking for a little more time. We've done enough research, but we're not finished, so we're going to need more than the 45 day timeout to come back to the council with a formal ordinance. And I suspect the same thing will happen here. So, are we going to need 45 days plus the full 10 months? Probably not. I would hope not, but we, you know, anyway. So 45 days is the initial timeout, the reality is we'll be coming, probably coming back for additional time.
This is when you have an applicant wanting to establish, put a new position telling you, you want that memorandum to 45 days to do your diligence.
That's right. That's exactly right.
I understand, so this is not under SEQA, is what I see?
No.
And why is that?
It's, well, under section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines because, well, maybe, John, maybe you can discuss it.
It's not a physical change. It's not, it's not a project as defined by SEQA. What we're dealing with is language within the code, right? Now, when we get a project, whatever that project might be, that project, unless it's a ministerial act, you know, could be subject to SEQA. But in, but in most cases, you know, something like this would not be subject to SEQA. I mean, just like, just like tattoo lounges, I mean, the approach that staff was taking with tattoo lounges was that it was a staff approval process as opposed to a full blown conditional use from that process, which means there's, there's less, you know, public notification, et cetera, as long as the use meets certain terms and conditions. So, I suspect we'll probably end up doing something similar to that with these types of uses as well. But regardless, you know, staff, we've reviewed this, we've reviewed this with legal and with others and we feel that, basically, it's not, it's not a project as defined, so it doesn't require specific SEQA analysis.
But what are we going to get out of the 45 day moratorium after we've already established that it doesn't fall under SEQA regulation?
Two different things, so you're talking about two different animals. The, the 45 days gives you, gets us a timeout, which kind of suspends any current applications that are pending, right? And then affords staff the opportunity to get in and to analyze alternatives, alternative languages, alternative methods to deal with the land use permitting of these types of uses. SEQA's a separate issue.
Do we presently have a hookah lounge?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
This is, okay, this is coming into play.
Not that I'm aware of.
So is this, will this become back before the planning commission, after the moratorium? Or is this just going to be handled at the city council?
The ordinances that will be developing will be brought back to the commission for recommendation to the city council, yes. Yes, because we're, because we're modifying the zoning code. We're modifying the zoning code, which is an ordinance, and for us to do that, the process is that we go through the commission, the commission conducts the hearings, and then make a recommendation to the council and the city council ultimately adopts the ordinance after first and second reading.
If the staff isn't satisfied with their study at the end of this first 45 days, will a second moratorium come back to the commission for approval?
No, what happens, what happens is it, it becomes, it's a council matter, so council ultimately takes action to create the moratorium or not to create the moratorium. So if they ask for the moratorium to be extended, then it's by council action that the moratorium is extended. As it relates to the moratorium, yes, but not as it relates to physical changes to the zoning code to deal with these types of land uses, which are mandated to come back to you for review and recommendation.
I'm just thinking in terms of other locations, other cities that do have these lounges and places, do they have this type of diligence before they approve an application or such or anything like that? Any research?
Well, as far as approving applications, the, this moratorium doesn't, isn't really specific to applications, it's just citywide, so we have encountered a lot of other cities that have put this moratorium, put moratoriums in place just to have a timeout so that they can figure out zoning and also, it seems like a lot of cities are treating e-cigarettes similar to cigarettes and, and so just to figure out what the best and most appropriate way to regulate these things is. And so a lot of other cities have done that for e-cigarettes and hookah lounges and similar things.
If I may, would this be to, say this, an application comes in that would suspend that, 45 days would kick in, and if a new application came in shortly after that, different, you know, business owner, would that start a 45 day, is it on that?
The 45 days would begin the day that the, the council approved the ordinance and then after that 45 day period, if no action is taken, then that moratorium will no longer be applicable to the city or to any applicant. So, somebody who submits an application during the moratorium period, that moratorium would no longer apply to them, so their application would continue to be processed.
So basically, it applies to applications that are pending now and that might be pending during the term of the moratorium, which initially would be 45 days unless extended by council action.
Which could be up 10 days, 15 to a year.
Well, what I, what I heard Jamie say is that it could be up to an additional 10 months.
Fifteen days, I believe.
Fifteen days, again by council action, near the end of the initial 45 day period.
And then an additional year after that if necessary, but that, that...
I don't, yeah.
It doesn't seem like something the city's interested in.
Okay.
Public hearing then, is there anyone here who would like to speak to this matter?
Hi. I don't know how this goes exactly, I've been up here before, obviously. I, what I'd like to ask you to ask the councils is that you do propose this moratorium until you figure out more about especially hookah lounges, cigarette lounges, vapor bars, and most definitely the drug paraphernalia retailers, because we all know we have a huge one right down the street here. However, the e-cigarette retailers, kind of weird about that, you can go to Chevron and buy any cigarette, you can go to Target, they're everywhere. I'm not going to talk about the not smoking or anything like that. What I'd like you, to ask you guys to do is ask the planning commission or the city council to go ahead and go do this, that's, that's fine, I don't think anybody really knows that much about it and most of the things on here are things I don't really want in my city anyways, however, with, sorry, losing my, losing my thing. Okay, here we go. With, you know, letting the ones that have went through, obviously, my, my partner, be an exception to that and then, not only that, but then he could help you, as I did with the tattooing aspect of it, with, with John and I, to explain a little bit more about it, you know, I don't think it's new, you know, if, like I told Jill Anderson the other day, I said, it's just, I'm a businessman, that's what people are doing, that's what they're buying, a lot of people are quitting tobacco through this and, you know, so what are you going to sell, what's popular, you know what I mean? So, that's about all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Tammy, I'm from Riverbank. I just wanted to tell you guys, the, the hookah lounges and the, and the hookah bongs that they smoke out of is actual secondhand smoke coming out. The vapor cigarettes or the e-cigarettes or, or anything referred to as, as far as e-cigarette, is all water vapor coming out. I work in the medical field and it's the same concept of a nebulizer treatment for a patient that has asthma. It opens the airways and it's all water vapor coming back out. I know personally, for me, I've quit smoking for a year and a half now using an e-cigarette and I have health issues that I had to quit smoking and it's, it's brought, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling better, it's made my health a lot better. And the other thing is, is I can understand the whole moratorium thing, but I don't feel like one person that is not out to, to do a drug paraphernalia shop or all this stuff that we see out here, even at the local gas stations, you got Ray's Mart right down the road that sells stuff that is not appropriate for anybody and can be used as drug paraphernalia. Somebody who is an honest person that wants to start and, and do honest business in a town that they feel is a small town that's got good people in it and, and we don't bring bad things to this town, you know what I mean? So that's all I wanted to say, thanks.
Yes? Tammy, before you leave, may we have your last name, please?
Walker.
And can you sign in?
Yes.
How you guys doing? My name's Jeremy Fennell. I own SinCal Industries in the Crossroad Shopping Center. I just wanted to say, like, we understand what's good for this city, we live in this city, we get it. Some other people don't live in this city, don't kind of get what's going on here. I've been over this, my fifth year in business, I've not tried to sell e-cigarettes ever, I've not tried to sell bongs, I've not tried to sell anything, I've never smoked a cigarette in my life. I've seen the impacts, the beautiful impacts that e-cigarettes can do for people who have smoked. I have family members who smoked forever and couldn't kick it and the e-cigarettes came out and it helped and I think it's ridiculous and a shame to hear a Googled report like this, guys, that has no backing of any of the things he made up to attack e-cigarettes. If you want to say, you know, water bongs or things that may be used with medical marijuana, if you want to take a stance against that, like our city already has against dispensaries, that's one thing, but an e-cigarette with actual e-cigarette juice, it's a great thing and it does nothing but good for people. Secondly, I just want to kind of take the moratorium and say, since he brought it up, putting the moratorium, this moratorium, in the same category as the tattoo moratorium is a horrible thing. I've talked to the city council, like he said, the two shops that got to pass were, said that they had to work with the staff. Unfortunately, the city council members, multiple, have told me not to use their name, but said I could say it. They said they felt tricked and that they didn't know what they were voting on because at the time, we felt that we were voting on, okay, the two get through and we're going to work with the staff and they're going to keep everything going good and then the moratorium is applied to new people. Well, unfortunately, we were required just to move across town, we were told we had to all go in and submit for background checks, that we weren't allowed to work seven days a week, we can only work six days a week, that we couldn't be open anytime later than nine or earlier than 10. I say this because the city's idea is to play big brother and to try to rule everything so tightly that it's really messing things up. I, as a result of the moratorium on the tattoos, I'm not going to be a businessman in the City of Riverbank past this weekend, so I just want to let you know that there's some shady things going on, some people represent those things and don't take everything you hear from everyone as truth because I can tell you, when he gave the report on the tattoos and how bad they are and the things they've spread, he gave a whole bunch of things and when everyone stood up and said, well, why, why would you say this, that's not true, he sat there and didn't say a thing. So, it's funny that they bring these fictitious things to the table to try to, to serve his purpose, but the truth is, it's actually a beautiful thing if you look at it. So I just wanted to kind of let you guys know. Again, my name's Jeremy Fennell, I'll sign in.
Question, why are you, you say you're not going to be in business?
Yes, sir.
What?
I will not lay down and let a, a city tell me that I have to require myself and all of my employees to go in for a background check. I've said, hey, this is discrimination, you can't do this, I, I mean, I signed a three year lease, I'm going to be right across from a bar. The bar, if you look on Yelp, has all negative reviews about how much drugs go through there. If you look at our Yelp, our Yelp is flawless, we do everything we can to help the community. Like I said, when I first got up here, I didn't sell this stuff just as a statement of, hey, I don't even want to be confused with bongs or with e-cigarettes or anything because there is a stigma that people are pointing out, that is a horrible stigma. E-cigarettes are beautiful and to point that out as a negative thing is bad. Unfortunately, I'm a tattoo shop owner who has to keep his tattoos hidden because tattoos are a negative thing too, so that's, that's what it is. Basically, I'm not willing to lay down and, and be played, so I'm just going to move somewhere that will take me as a businessman.
I'd like to speak to this.
Hello, I'm Robert West. I'm from Modesto, California, and I believe I'm the applicant in pending at the moment for e-sig retailer. I'm here today to urge the commission to reconsider this moratorium, or not, depending on what we can figure out here. I am a small business owner. I am newly moved here from Modesto and preparing to open a retail outlet. Firstly, I want to save lives and get people off traditional cigarettes. Secondly, I want to create meaningful and well-paying jobs in this wonderful community. Small businesses account for nearly half of California's jobs, and I'd like to do my part for this city. Unfortunately, if the recommendation of a moratorium is adopted, it will force me and my business to have to leave the city of Riverbank. I have a lot of different points here to get to. I did start smoking in nineteen ninety-four. In two thousand and six, I began looking for a smoking alternative, because I was watching my father Darwin West die from over sixty years of smoking cigarettes. And early two thousand and seven, I discovered that electronic cigarettes, and in two thousand and seven, I was completely quit smoking a pack and a half of cigarettes a day habit. I felt better, I feel great, my chest, everything, wasn't coughing up stuff in the morning. My father was given less than six months to live by his doctor at that time, and to humor me, he actually began using an electronic cigarette. My father remained with us for another few years. We saw such a remarkable improvement with his late stages of COPD and bronchitis from vaping. But sixty years had taken its tragical toll and we did lose him in two thousand and twelve. To this day, I attribute the electronic cigarettes for giving him a few more years with his family, and I'd only wished I'd found those sooner. Now, I am an experienced e-sig user. I quit my jobs at the time and devoted my life to researching this technology, and if you talk to any electronic cigarette user, you will find that it is helping them quit the deadly smoking habit. What goes into electronic cigarettes? Four ingredients: propylene glycol, propylene glycol, sorry. Used in restaurants and hospitals to clean the air. Vegetable glycerin, which is derived from vegetables. One hundred percent organic nicotine solutions, doesn't always have to have the nicotine in it. But those are also derived from vegetables that carry nicotine naturally in them: cauliflower, potatoes, peppers, and many others from the nightshade family. And food-grade flavorings, used in the baking industry and are all considered gross, generally recognized as safe. Conventional cigarettes contain more than four thousand different chemicals. In contrast, conventional cigarettes contain more than four thousand different dangerous chemicals. Once you mix these together, you use a battery-powered device that has the same batteries as, say, your laptops or your cellphones, and it heats the solution into a vapor. These four ingredients combined to make a liquid satisfies the cravings of people who smoke. And it also emulates the hand-to-mouth motion and delivering of consistent controlled dosage of nicotine. This also means no more cigarette butts littering the city, on the ground that end up in drain pipes, potentially starting fires in dry conditions. No more secondhand smoke for bystanders and no offensive cigarette odors. The vast majority of the opposed the electronic cigarettes are those with vested interest in ensuring the status quo is maintained. In two thousand and nine, I launched my own electronic cigarette company and have worked closely with various e-sig retail outlets, teaching them what they need to know about entering this industry. I had discovered many people were quickly jumping into this industry for a fast money grab. However, my goal was to educate these business owners and have successfully helped numerous electronic shops go from failing to thriving businesses, from Modesto to North Carolina. My customer base is very dramatically. I have police and sheriff officers that purchase my products from Modesto, Gustine, and Stockton areas. I have US military stationed from here to the US and to South Korea. Various employees from many different cities, as well as management employees from several corporations, including but not limited to Saymart, O'Brien's Market, Amazon, Walmart, CarMax, Rayleigh's, and just your average citizen looking to better themselves using our product. We reach and help our customers from all walks of life with outstanding cigarette cessation rates. We estimate at least eighty-five percent of our customers are completely cigarette-free. This lowers healthcare and health maintenance costs and improves the quality of life substantially. My goal here is to become a part of your wonderful community. I plan to create jobs here. We do not operate with liquor store, tobacco shop, or drug paraphernalia mentality. Anyone who steps in our shop sits down with us and becomes, and comes in to improve their life. We are here to help improve their life. We take that commitment seriously. We guide our customers on how to use their equipment safely, effectively, and courteously. Electronic cigarettes work. I have the personal experience of thousands of customers who have quit smoking cigarettes and feel better about themselves. Some still stop in to say hello, a heartfelt hug, and a thank you for saving their lives in a way that worked quickly, affordably, and without adverse side effects of other smoking sensation methods. Imagine what we can do great things for Riverbank. We can reduce the number of cigarettes that litter this city, help prevent cigarette-related fires. We might be able to save lives and for someone's mother, someone's father, someone's daughter or son. My business products are not used for drugs. That is not what we are about. We do not carry items that promote or enable a customer to consume illicit drugs. We do not sell to anyone less than eighteen years of age, and we verify that with a valid driver's license. We are not a head shop. In closing, we would want to be a valuable asset to your city. We want to help get your people healthy that are smoking. We want to create jobs. We want to make Riverbank better, and most importantly, we want to keep your loved ones around longer. Thank you guys for giving me my time to talk. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Hey, you say you're based out of Modesto?
I was currently based out of Modesto. I was on Carver and Roseburg and I closed up shop after helping another e-sig retailer successfully gain ground, gain, you know, momentum, taught him how to use all his equipment, everything that was involved. And I just decided it was time for me to go ahead and start opening my own line of e-sig shops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Maybe you could just help me understand a couple of things. How long does it take to establish a regular ordinance without using this emergency moratorium thing?
For a zoning ordinance, it requires ten-day notice to the planning commission for a public hearing. And then it goes to city council, which also requires ten-day notice, and then after it's approved by city council, it takes thirty days to become active.
So, this is the second time that we've started using, what is it, ordinance, six, five, eight, five, eight? And I believe it's required that a emergency situation be present in order to utilize it. I think I'm correct on that, and I think it even says that in this, in the ordinance, twenty fourteen dash zero one zero. So, we're predicating the use of this emergency ordinance based on the fact that secondhand smoke from a lounge that has closed doors is going to affect children? And would not that include any place that had second, any bar, any, any place that allows smoking would fall under the same? It just seems like we're using this ordinance when we could just establish an ordinance. If we don't want to have hookah lounges, why don't we just establish an ordinance not to have a hookah lounge and not use this emergency moratorium? It just doesn't seem like it's really designed for this particular purpose. And we're utilizing it because someone puts in an application and now we don't want them to open, so we're going to stop them forty-five days at a time, and, you know, and you know it's going to go to ten months, and then it's going to go to two years, and if they've invested a lot of money, they're out of business. They can't, they can't wait around that long. That doesn't seem right to me. But if I was going to, and I will, I'll make a suggestion, that we divide this up, this proposed moratorium, not to include e-vapor type nicotine providing, whatever, because that's going to include any possibility of a grocery store coming in here in the next two years, any gas station coming in here, even, it says, anything that, you know, gives you nicotine, which would include cigarettes. So, are all of our current retailers for cigarettes going to be, are they going to have to meet some new requirement to sell cigarettes? It's a little too broad, I think, and maybe we should consider dividing it up a little bit more, so that we don't include e-cigarettes, which are sold everywhere, and the vapor things that aren't causing any secondhand smoke. There's no danger to children from these ordinances? Just a couple of things to think about. Appreciate it. I'll sign in.
Yeah. I just want to say that in my time working with Robert West, I've learned plenty of things about electronic cigarettes. I didn't really know much about them, but the more that I did, I realized that they are very safe to use. When you kind of loop us in with drug paraphernalia and hookah, hookah is tobacco. Hookah is just like smoking a flavored cigarette. So, I just, really just ask that we are separated from anything that really involves tobacco, actual tobacco, because it's all natural. It's nothing, nothing really that's proven to be harmful yet. Just wanted to know.
What was your name?
Chelsea, sorry. Bruceard. Bruceard?
I'm anything. Anyone else? I guess I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner, comments, suggestions?
I, I like everything that was said, and thank you. Gives us a broader understanding of what's being, you know, spoken about out there and what's taking place. I have been to a few of these, I understand them. I have seen, I have seen folks in action at certain plazas when they see the vapor, they kind of, kind of get away from it, that they're thinking it's smoke. I think there's a misconception of understanding that it's actually more of a vapor versus the smoke. Just recently in Stockton, I was at a location and someone was using one of the vapor units, and they actually, the folks actually moved tables, thinking that it's going to harm them. So again, there's, I guess, the education there behind that. But no, I think this shares a lot of light, and for myself, I think it's something maybe we could further expand a little more. I think there's a lot of unknowns here still, to really consider this adoption right now.
Yeah, I have something to say. I want to commend everyone, every business owner that took all the time and the energy and the effort to put in to educate us, as well as yourselves, on this particular type of instrument. And that this, this item that's brought before us is something that I believe that and feel that the city, this is something that's coming, it's starting to mushroom. So, the city needs to have time to understand how we can best facilitate everyone. It's not to throw anyone out, it's not to say you can't do anything, it's to give the city time to see how can we facilitate everyone according to our general plan. So it's not saying that we're trying to eliminate or segregate or discriminate against any particular type of business that want to come in, but we need to have more time to investigate how best we can serve everyone, so that everyone can, you know, flourish here in our community. And like I said, I appreciate that you guys came out to voice your opinions and then what you had to say.
I really have a question, why the e-cigarette lounges and the e-cigarette retailers are included in this? I would love to have two separate resolutions addressing this. It may be too late to do it tonight, but I feel very strongly that they are two very different animals that we're talking about here. I don't know if there's any way to solve that tonight, but I would definitely like to bring it to somebody's consideration. There is definitely a difference between a hookah lounge and an e-cigarette lounge, I know that. That's my, I don't, I see the problem, I'm not quite sure how we can correct it tonight. My commissioners, my fellow commissioners?
Give me two options here.
Three, I have the three here.
I don't know if we can change the wording on the amendment.
Amend, has amended the commission or reject the resolution?
On your options? Yeah, you can, yes, the commission can either pass the resolution recommending that council adopt this ordinance, and mainly, it's the language of the ordinance that we're looking at, whether, and that includes both e-cigarette businesses and hookah lounges. You can also recommend to the council to adopt the ordinance subject to suggested, your amendments, recommended amendments, or not pass the recommendation on to council.
And as you're stating, if we were to make two different resolutions for this amendment, recommend, I should say.
Yeah, I would like to remove the e-cigarette lounges and e-cigarette retailers from this, because I really think that you can't compare an e-cigarette lounge to a drug paraphernalia retailer. I think it's an unfair.
As I said, that, you know, we have bars around the corner that go outside smoking.
They're also saying e-cigarettes, paraphernalia, and hookah lounges are all three different. Is that what I'm getting?
Yeah, I think that.
Your e-cigarette lounge and e-cigarette retailer are different from a?
All the other, all the other things here.
Okay, so.
So that would be my suggestion for an amendment to perhaps pass the forty-five day moratorium, excluding the e-cigarette lounges and the e-cigarette retailers.
Now, would that be the vapor bars also that we're looking at in this?
I don't know much about vapor bars.
Yeah.
Can I open the public hearing if we have somebody that knows anything about vapor bars?
What is a vapor bar?
Before we go, is it legal to reopen the public hearing right now?
Can reopen, yes.
Thank you.
So, what is a vapor bar? I'm not quite understanding, is it establishment where people just come in and pay, like they would get a drink? Is that, what exactly is your guys' kind of concept of what you think of vapor bar is?
I have no idea what it is.
I think I want you to tell me, as a professional.
Because you have an e-hooka lounge, which I guess could be considered an e-hooka bar, where people come in, pay, sit down, a hookah is put on a table, and they all smoke the tobacco together. That's not so much with the e-sig retailer. When you say lounge, I think of somebody walking in and sitting and waiting for their turn to be in line.
So is there such thing as a vapor lounge?
There is such thing as a vapor lounge.
What is it?
That would be a place where somebody would walk in, where they would have the ability to vape their own supplies, inside of an establishment that is okay with them vaping their own supplies. Not something they would, of course, if they wish to buy such and such equipment, such and such juice, they have an opportunity now to go into a separate room where they're able to use the supplies in the room. That kind of, but as far as a vapor bar, I wouldn't use that terminology with any of this, that doesn't even make sense. And now a place that comes in, if they're allowed to try the various flavors, that could be considered a vapor lounge, where they're allowed to come in and before they purchase, say they want a certain tobacco flavor, they're allowed to try four or five tobacco flavors, well, they're of course going to have to try them inside of a building, you know? They try them, that would be considered a vapor lounge, I would say, more than a vapor bar, because nobody's coming in and buying like a shot of juice to put in their tank unless they actually purchase the product itself.
No e-cigarettes contain nicotine? Harmful nicotine?
Say again?
E-cigarettes do not contain a harmful nicotine?
E-cigarettes, now, every manufacturer has their own supply of nicotine. The nicotine that we use is derived from organic vegetables. Um, nicotine is found in vegetables, there's several vegetables in a nightshade family. Um, you can have zero nicotine, you can have up to thirty milligrams. Our company doesn't sell more than thirty milligrams because we feel after that it's just too much nicotine for somebody. A three or four pack a day smoker may need thirty milligrams to help wean himself off the cigarettes. He needs to have that fix per se of the nicotine to help him finally drop down his levels, and they do, they all, they, everybody drops down their levels, nobody stays. Somebody comes in with a twenty-four, three or four months later, they're down to an eighteen milligram, three or four months later, they're down to a twelve milligram, same amount of time, maybe less, they're down to six, then before you know it, they're on zero. Some people possibly keep going because they love the flavor that they get, it, it helps them in other aspects, it helps them if they're stressed out, they don't go right back to jumping on the cigarette bandwagon. And then I have a lot of people who just absolutely stop, and that's great, and they still come and visit me to this day and call me and everything else, you know, so... Thank you again.
Separation? I do like that. Or recommend or amending?
Okay, well then I need help informing the amendment. I think that we're in agreement, we would like to, to amend it excluding the e...
The term is subject to?
It would be, uh, it would be amending, it would be passing the resolution, um, as amended, and then you would amend the language.
Just thinking, in, in terms of the hookah lounge now, as well, you got a lot of local places here that, I mean, bars establishments are currently that are, can go outside and smoke, and that's in residential.
Doesn't affect them?
It's not?
I, I don't think it affects existing ones, it's the, it's the new thing. This thing has nothing to do with it. So I, I would say something, I don't know, you can tell me if this is right, or if this is according to what we agree upon, is that, um, we, um, amend it so, amend it so that we, um, properly identify the e-cigarettes, hookah lounge, and the vapor lounge.
Proper, now, to properly identify wouldn't necessarily be excluding them, if your, if your objective is to, to more clearly define them, um, that could also be done, but...
I think maybe he means exclude it from the moratorium.
So you're...
Because what's happening here is, um, is that it looks like we don't wanna lump them all together, but we need to do something today, okay, so that we have time to create, to, to explore this so that we can properly identify within our zoning parameters. So how do we go about that? You understand what I'm saying?
I mean, um, I, I, I'm a little confused, because really, at this point, all we're asking for is a timeout, so we can study, analyze, go beyond the Google search, beyond whatever, and to gain more information, just like we've gained tonight, so that from a planning perspective, we can present options back to the commission, back to the council, and how to deal with this, you, these issues specifically. Right now, our code doesn't deal with it, quite frankly, because it's all, these are all new uses. And we may find that, you know, the types of uses that you're talking about exempting, e-cigarette lounges, vapor bars, if they even exist, you know, et cetera, you know, really aren't as harmful as we think it is, or, 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 or they don't require any special terms or conditions, or, you know, whatever. And at that point, you know, when we come back with the ordinance code itself, the ordinance code can distinguish between the various types of uses. Right now, we don't address it at all, period. So we're saying help, I mean, we need, we need help, we need time to understand it, you know, we need the practitioners to help us understand what it is, so we can, you know, properly deal with it as a land use matter.
Currently, when someone comes to the table with an application, they're...
Addressed, so if it's not, if it's not specifically addressed, the code is not allowed.
Correct, but in that timeframe from the application that gets turned in to the time it gets turned up to the, the commissioners, uh, there is that diligence that one does to either recommend or not recommend, correct?
Well, if I understand the question.
That one is doing their, their Google searching and everything of such to present to, for approval on any type of permits or anything like that, so there is time already, correct? In terms of ones that, there's already time that are allotted to do the research.
I'm, again, I'm not understanding the question, so, so in order for us, in order for staff to properly evaluate these types of land uses, we need additional time to do that, okay? We need to, we need to obviously consider the public testimony that was given tonight, right? And public testimony that may be given at the commission, or at the council level, plus additional research that we're doing with other cities and how they're handling it, so we can report that information back to you, the commission, and obviously the city council, so, so that you folks can make an informed decision as to how you might wanna deal with these types of uses in the future. At this point, I, we don't have enough information, and that's what I'm telling you, we don't have enough information. There's more information that needs to be gathered, which is why we're asking for the timeout.
Still leaning to...
Am I confusing you now? Sorry.
No, 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 I, I still would like, I mean, I, I do understand them to a certain degree, the e-cigarettes, and I, I do see them being out in, in the market. I, I like the amendment side of it, to exclude them from this. Um, and, uh, you know, again, the hookah lounges, I could see a little more, um, as I read in here, that it could disrupt other businesses perhaps of coming to town if there's a, an establishment of such.
What I get is that we don't know where it's gonna end up. That's the point, we don't have any zoning for it. We don't have any specific, specific guidelines for this particular type of environment, where it's gonna be placed.
Land use.
Yeah, that's, that's where we're at. We need to find out what's best for everybody, where this needs to be placed.
I, I kinda fall to more it's, it's commercial. It goes in a commercial retail, or it could, I mean, I've seen these in...
Where at in commercial?
Wherever there, there's a commercial opening.
But until we can figure that out, until we can get some proper zoning, because right now, we don't have it, and I think that's what our planning...
To the land use.
Director is saying, is that we don't have that, we don't have that language, so that everyone is properly catered to, we need to have time to create that language. Okay?
Um, I, I, I can, I understand your point. I still, while we're debating this, I think we're talking about two different things. There are areas where perhaps a hookah lounge would be acceptable, and probably many places where it would not. I don't think that there would be the same objection to the e-cigarette lounges or retailers. I think they're two very different things, and I think that to be fair, we need to, to consider them separately. That's just how I feel.
If we were to take that mo, or that step, we would be doing item number two, the amendment. Is that correct?
Sounds like it, and you guys just need to come up with new language.
So in this case, we would, uh, make a motion to adopt the resolution as an amendment to exclude the e-cigarette lounges, the e-cigarette retailers, uh, from this adoption.
Even if we would soften it temporarily?
Once we do that, it's okay for it to open up, because we don't have rezoning.
Correct.
Wherever we are, we're right in the middle of doing our rezoning right now. So I'm not saying anything against them, but wherever we have a commercial place...
Yeah. It's viable, it's open. And I, I lean to that based on, I see these...
Is for us to have time so that that doesn't happen after tonight. You see what I mean?
I, I do, I do.
I wouldn't want it right across the street from my elementary school, I don't care what it is. Okay?
Correct, correct, but you got bars across the street.
What I'm saying is, that, that's something we have to work on too. Right now, we need time to be able to put it in its proper perspective. I mean, we can go however you way, you know, we wanna go, but, you know, us being in here making a decision for the community.
Right.
City, which, you know, most of our community of residents aren't even here, so we have to, you know, I'm not telling you, we have to think on the basis of that, yeah, I understand that there's a two different things, two different things, and we can exclude one or include them all. But if we exclude one...
All right, it's open.
Open, you know, even though it is an e-cigarette or e-vapor cigarette, you know, they can, you know, we hear that it's not, um, it's, it's not, you know, nicotine or what have you, but it's where do, where can they, where can we, where is that allowed at in the city? Pretty much. You know what I mean?
I do, I do. But I still feel towards that, I, I, I mean, I, I, I see these businesses all throughout the I five, the nine, and through city to city, I mean, and I, I see this establishments that it's a business. And, and, and given that it's deemed that, it's a business, um, it's, I think it boils down to parents educating the kids as well, if we're gonna be putting something across the street or something to that degree, but I mean, that's a different topic. So would we be, uh, motioning to move on one of these three items?
Yes.
And it has to be moved on tonight?
Uh...
Yep, yes, yes.
Question from the, where are you planning on opening up at?
Across the street, actually, from the bar, just down the road here.
Somebody wanna try?
Put it together? Well, I'd, I'd like to, uh, motion that we adopt resolution twenty fourteen dash zero one four as amend by the commission to exclude the e-cigarette lounge, the e-cigarette retailers from this, uh, interim urgency ordinance.
I'll second it. Call for a motion, please.
For Stuart? Bill, uh, Commissioner Vilktoya?
Yes.
And Commissioner, any?
No.
So without, out a, uh, without three, the resolution does not pass. We need, um, we need a, um, we need more than a majority of the quorum, we need a majority of the commission for a resolution, um, recommending.
And can I motion that we move this to where we have the full commission here, so we can make a...
Or you can consider another motion.
Consider another motion, uh...
So that motion failed, that's basically what happened.
We can move it to another...
So we can't, with the quorum of three, we, it's not possible to either pass or...
Well, it has to be three oh.
Got it.
So you can deliberate, come up with another motion.
Okay.
If it survives with a second motion, then you can do another vote.
But there's no way to carry this forward to where we have the full commission here, correct? Has to be done tonight, like you stated?
Well, we're on, we're on schedule to get this on to council, we have applicants that are pending. There is a sense of, sense of urgency on this, I mean, not only behalf of you, but also in behalf of staff to actually, you know, deliver something back to you for recommendation and consideration, so...
Got it.
It is a double edged sword that we've created here.
Okay. Well, in terms of that, I mean, we have option one and three. I guess we could go, be going back and forth on this.
Always entertain, um, another amendment if there's, if there's other language that you can work out.
Yeah. Any other language to that, anything that would... Do you think we have any?
Thinking, I'm thinking. I think it's only rejected because I think that probably some of those things need to be looked at.
Right. But I'm, I'm thinking there has been, research, research has been done, not, not particularly by us individually, but it, it's been done across, I would say, state to state, on, on, on this product and the hookah lounge and the cigarette, you know, the actual cigarette and so forth, and, and data's been passed on for decades now.
Responsibility of what's, um, medically or approved or what have you, but most, we're pretty much basing on whether it's time to allow it to be, to, to happen now or to happen later. See, because right now, we're, none of us are physicians or scientists or anything like that, but we are commissioners of the city, and we have to take that into account when we say, how do we want this city to be developed? Where will we allow certain things to be? And that's where we're at now.
As you pointed out, the location's gonna be in a, I think satisfactory area that, uh, we would all say is, is deemed precisely. That's where the land use, uh...
There's gotta be a way of wording this, there has to be a way. Legal, help, you could help us with our wording.
So you're, you're proposing, you want, you wanna find a way to, I'm a little... Determine the loc, location.
But that's what you're saying back to the land.
Again, you, you guys are talking about the, the work that staff needs to do to present the land use matter back to you for action, to modify the code, to deal with these specific land uses. We're, we're gonna do that, but we're not prepared to do that tonight.
But I think what we're concerned about is that we don't want e-cigarettes to be locked together with drug paraphernalia and hookah lounges, I think that's what we're trying to say.
You want that as a separate resolution, because the reality is, none of these uses are dealt with in our ordinance code that was primarily developed in nineteen sixty-seven, so what I'm saying is that we have to somehow deal with it, because there are uses that are coming before us, and quite frankly, I don't have the tools at the planning department counter to say with, to these businesses, you know, what land uses, what zoning they can, uh, uh, um, conduct their business in. Can they conduct it in the commercial? I don't know, it doesn't specifically say it's allowed or not allowed.
The problem with designating a specific area tonight is that you're, under the zoning code, you're required to give ten days notice before you, um, make any changes, so a proposal like that would...
So would it, would it solve things if we did ask for two separate resolutions, considering them, those two things separately?
I, I mean, I hear you, I hear you say when we bring it back to you that you want it, you know, dealt with separately, I mean, I, I hear that, I mean, that, that's real clear to me, but I, I'm here telling you, and I'm, and I will tell the council, that we don't have the tools to deal with this with our zone, with our zoning code, so we need the timeout to develop the tools to deal with it. And it, and it may very well be that we come back and we say... And it, and it may very well be that we come back and we say that, you know, based on the research that's been done, based on the evidence that's been presented, e-cigarette lounges, e-cigarette retailers, et cetera, will be allowed or should be allowed in certain zones. And we need to modify our code to specify that that's the case. But again, that'd be a future amendment to zoning code to deal with those uses specifically. Because right now, quite frankly, the code doesn't deal with it. Let me, let me make another comment, I guess. So, so if, if you were to, um, let, let, let's presume that the motion that you pa- that you, um, tried to act on would have passed. It was a three oh. Reality is, if we were to exempt out e-cigarette lounges and cigarette, e-cigarette retailers, you know, the response to the counter would be that we don't know how to deal with that. So it's kind of, in effect, it's kind of the same thing. Because the code, ordinance code doesn't specifically talk about where those types of land uses are allowable or not allowable. So, so, so in retrospect, you know, we're going to be, you know, modifying the code to deal with these others on point, hookah lounges and others. And quite frankly, we should be dealing with these other uses as well because we have pending applications that we've got to somehow have a tool to be able to deal with them, to put them in the right use.
I think the key word here being retailer, which is a, a business. It, it, if it's a business.
All could be businesses. I mean, real, liter- literally, every single one of these could be a business. For hookah lounges of retail, that's a business.
But hookah lounges and drug paraphernalia are, I think, on a total different subject in my mind.
Yeah.
Um, retailer, and I see where, you know, there are some retailers that do sell drug paraphernalia. I think that, that ought to be looked at a lot better, um, going forward. But wi- with, with the word e-retailer, uh, the e-cig retailer, it's a business that they're, they, they have a cost, they have goods and there's, there's, you know, patrons that are coming in and purchasing. Like they do at regular local stores. I mean, um, I, I mean, every Chevron.
I mean, we're not, I don't think it's saying you can't do it, it's just that we need time to determine when you can. Okay, is that saying?
It's being done already, though.
Some of them are doing it, but we, but at this point, those that are doing it.
Got passed.
Right, but right now, to, to say, okay, well, you know, we're going to do this and that, it's going to effectively open the floodgates.
I don't think we're going to get a floodgate of.
Well, he's already got pending applications.
Correct.
Okay, so we make a decision on.
And that's good for the city, we got business coming.
We need to make a decision on whether those existing applications are okay for today or whether those existing applications have to wait until we become better educated on how we're going to devise our city. Okay. That's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at it because right, it's, it's not, uh, it, I mean, it's a dire need that once we put something granted, it's going to be in stone for a while. That we make sure that we give it great thought and we need time to get it great thought. You have one now. Say there's fifteen to go up tomorrow. Well, you can come up to the podium, please.
Well, public hearing's closed unless.
Oh, unless you want to reopen the public hearing.
Reopen the public hearing.
You have electronic cigarettes in the city now. You have the two tobacco cities on Atchison, you have every gas station stop and save across from a school. Uh, O- O'Brien's Market, you have electronic cigarettes now in your city being sold. But the problem is, is you have them being sold by people who don't know what they're selling to people. They're just handing it over, here, take this juice off the shelf, buy it. Here, here's this battery. They go home, they tinker with it, they spill the juice all over it. They have no idea what they're doing. What I'm here for is to teach people. They come in, they sit down. I don't stand behind a counter. You're not going to walk into my establishment and find me behind a display case. You're going to sit down with me at a desk and I'm going to teach you the proper way to use it, how to be courteous and public with it and all that. So you have it now. So whatever you do today to stop it from being across from your schools, it's there. It's already across from your school. It's, kid just walks in to stop and save, they hardly ID anybody. They walk out with an electronic cigarette. They walk into my shop, they get ID'd, they get sent home. And heck, if I know it's your kid, you're going to get a phone call. You know, it's, it's here. It's, depends if you want it here with a responsible retailer to give it to the responsible adults that are looking for this product. That's all.
It seems like you guys are having an argument over a lounge or a hangout spot. This is a retailer. He's trying to open a business here and he's trying to do it the right way. Not like these little, these little, um, smoke shops that want to, um, say they're a smoke shop and they, they're selling weed out of the back. Or they're selling, um, crack pipes, or they're selling methamphetamine pipes, calling them, um, oil burners. You know what I mean? This is somebody who's legitimately trying to open a business downtown, not near schools, not to have people just hang out, but sell a product that's helpful to people and it's being halted for no other reason besides there's thick minded people that just don't want to see past the fact that they don't want this big overspill of things coming into this town when there's not a really big over, overspill of people coming to this town. I don't see why, and, um, something can't be put in to place a moratorium on something like this, with the exception of one going through. Somebody who's respectable, has a good background check. He's not a bad person and he's not a lounge. He's not, is not suggesting that people come and hang out at a, at a bar or sell shots of something. You know what I mean? It's somebody who can help you guys establish some sort of ordinance for this. People that, that, that he's researched this and he's done this. He's opened, he's helped other businesses open and do this effectively. You know, and, and I hear that you guys were talking about surrounding cities. Well, surrounding cities, let's name the cities. Because Modesto will let you open up any kind, anything you want, whenever you want, and they don't zone it. So, I mean, if it's this big, um, thing that's an urgency, talk about these surrounding cities that don't make it an urgency, they don't care. I mean, it's great that you guys care, but, but don't exclude the people that are caring with you, that want to make this a better place, that want to bring business to Riverbank instead of leaving Riverbank, like Jeremy's going to have to do. You know, pe- we want to be here for a reason. Not because we want to be, um, um, bringing filth in or because we want to have bad things happen here. We like our community. We like this place. It's nice. It's a small town. There's good people here.
Hello again, I'm Jeremy Fennell. So I guess my biggest thing is, it's already been brought up that there's supposed to be some sort of urgency here and I don't understand why the city of Riverbank believes that a single applicant creates urgency that needs a moratorium, that needs this. It's been brought up that there is due diligence and time to take care of this, how it's set up now. Unfortunately, it seems like it's, it's almost being aggressively presented to you that they don't want to do their jobs to, to do too separate or to do anything for, in all honesty. The truth is, one single guy wants to do good in this community by opening up something that will save people's lives and we're being told, no. That doesn't make any sense in any city, in any kind of meeting, anywhere. That is the most ridiculous thing. I would recommend, and you, you don't have to listen to me, but it just makes sense to shut this whole thing down because it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, unless, what?
About reopening that public meeting, huh? I would just like, Mr. Anderson continues to say, we just need a timeout, we just need a timeout. It's, it's probably highly unlikely you would be able to get anything done in forty-five days. And so it's going to get extended to ten months and fifteen days. And possibly then, if, we don't know what'll be on the agenda, ten months and fifteen days, maybe you won't have time to address it then and then it's going to go to two years or whatever the additional time amount was. So it's not just that you need a timeout. It's that you either need to do what you were about to do, which is split it up because those are definitely two different animals, or simply say no. And let the city come back with a second proposal. I mean, there, there seems to be an urgency that we must do this, we must do this, but there's not like going to be seven hundred. I mean, e-vapor is sold on every corner already. It's not an emergency. And to split it up is not going to cause any problem. If you do nothing, it's not going to cause any problem. You could, I mean, they can turn it right around, the city can put together something that works for you and have it in front of you by next month. They, they can do it. They did this in about a month. So I don't, I wish there wasn't this, we need this timeout for forty-five days when the reality is, it's not going to be forty-five days. It's going to be ten months or more and the people who are trying to open up establishments are going to be gone because they can't stay.
Thank you. Could I ask, like the alcohol side? We have a, uh, how many can go here? How many licenses could, could be accepted in town? We have something to that degree already, right?
Well, not really. I mean, the, the, the process is that a conditional use from it is secu- is required. We have now map instruments that ill- illustrate exactly where those businesses are and what type of businesses they have. And that is part of the decision the commission makes as to whether or not to allow those, um, new operations within close proximity of another one. I mean, again, it's more information that you have, as a commission, have at your discretion to be able to render an informed decision.
It'd have to be forty-five days?
Sorry, what, does what have to be forty-five days?
Does it have to be forty-five days?
That's a statutory a lot, um, the initial phase. Are you asking if it can be longer or shorter?
Shorter.
Uh. And it has, it can be no longer than forty-five days. In reality, to get an ordinance passed and it takes thirty days for an ordinance to, to become effective. In reality, you couldn't pass a zoning ordinance in that amount of time, shorter than forty-five days.
We should separate the two. Um, I don't know if that's, as you say, John, we don't know if we can do that today, right? If we attempted to do that?
Well, I mean, I'm, I mean, I haven't heard another motion.
Oh, got you, got you.
We had, we had a motion and the motion failed because we need more than a simple majority. We need majority and, which is a three and nothing, so, um, yeah.
Could we make a motion on that same motion we did earlier?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
We, uh, I guess.
Issue the same motion.
Why, no, you can't re, I mean, you'd have to modify the motion.
Okay.
The ori- the original, um, motion that was made would have to be, you know, modified, basically, in order for you guys to reconsider it, or a new motion, or a new motion. Public hearing's closed.
The public hearing is closed, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That, that applies to the, the city council level.
What are you guys' thoughts on this? Yeah, I, I, I don't feel we're going to get a big influx of this particular.
But once it's there.
Business, uh.
Later on, say now you got to go.
No, but if, if they try to position themselves in an area that, um, I guess when that applicant, future applicant comes in and position, tries to position themselves at this quote, X location, we have the opportunity to say, well, we're not approving that location. Based on, I mean, could we do something like that? Based on, I guess, specifics of that, where that business is going to be located? If we open it up.
What, what, what we're doing here is saying whether we're going to have a forty-five day moratorium or whether we're going to have a forty-five mort- forty-five day moratorium excluding something. It's one or the other.
Or, or none.
Or none.
Okay.
I don't think that we need a forty-five day moratorium on e-cigarettes. Is there a way that we can amend that to come up with a much shorter moratorium on the e-cigarettes? So I, I spoke with Doug, or I, I texted Doug and he said that you can reintroduce, or you can present a new motion substantially similar to the motion that you already proposed that failed. As far as creating a separate moratorium for e-cigarettes, you can have a separate moratorium, but it's still going to have to go through the same processes. They'll still have the same issues as this moratorium. If you're.
If we did, for example, we would say a ten day moratorium or twenty day moratorium.
Would it be?
It's not enough time, though.
It's not enough time for the e-cigarettes?
I'm just thinking in terms of due diligence for the land use.
Right. If the, if the, this mor- the moratorium law is meant to allow the city to, uh, to create some sort of zoning regulation and in order to, uh, change the zoning code to create that regulation, you have to take it to the planning commission with ten days' notice and then take it to the city council with ten days' notice and then it takes thirty days to take effect. The idea is that you have to give plenty of notice to people who might be affected by the zoning change. So, uh, if you shortened it, you would not be able to, to have an ordinance in place by the time it expired.
The reality is, when you're working with an ordinance, because an ordinance has to be heard once and then acted upon on a second time and then becomes effective thirty days thereafter. I mean, typically, an ordinance takes, you know, ninety days, really. I mean, you think about it with all the notices, planning commission, city council, the whole bit. So it's not something that's immediate. The other thing is that it's quite possible that some of these uses, based on testimony tonight, based on the desire of this, this commission, you know, may be similar uses to those uses that we already allow in commercial districts. And that's a determination that your, your board can make when we go through the evaluation of our zoning code, which quite frankly, we are not prepared to talk about tonight. You know, we're saying these uses, you know, aren't listed in our code. We don't know how to deal with them and we're saying, hey, we need, again, a timeout so we can consider them within the code. I mean, you know, it's not perfect, the process is not perfect, sorry. You know, it is what it is and we're trying to get up to speed on what, what, what we need to do. And we have real businesses, real retailers in town that maybe are conducting this business or would like to conduct the business, you know, and we're trying to accommodate that.
So notices went out?
Notices in this case was a general notice that was published in the local paper. And then also in, interested parties received notice as well. Yep, and then all the normal posting areas.
Lounge. So, if we're going to reintroduce this, it's just retailer only. No lounge. Because it seems like we're set hard on, right now, that these are two separate things as far as the hookah.
They're just separate, you're, you're taking time to be there.
And all that other stuff. We're saying that those are separate items and that they shouldn't be lumped together to make a forty-five day moratorium on all three of them. Am I correct? Am I correct on that?
Sure with that, yeah.
I'm for, well, what I'm really for is that we have the forty-five days, but it seems that we are not coming to an agreement because we want to say, okay, well, it is, you know, the retailer doesn't fall into that. But what I'm saying is, the best idea for the city is that we have time to let the planning commission do its job properly so that we're not putting Band-Aids on that. So that when, when it is approved, we know exactly what the rules, ramifications, zoning and everything is for this particular type of business, whether it's going to cover all those particular things.
A way to move that into two different resolutions. No, we don't. That's unfortunate.
Basically, it's the amend, amend. E-cigarette lounges.
All right, want to do a motion?
Well, I'm, we can. My motion is to approve resolution number two zero fourteen, zero fourteen, as it's written.
I, I motion that we adopt resolution twenty fourteen dash zero one four and amend this ordinance and remove e cig, e-cigarette retailers from this.
Call for motion.
Stewart? Commissioner Bill Betoa?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
We were moving the term lounge?
The lounge is still in there. We're, we're excluding just the, we're gonna use retailer, retailer.
Okay, I approve it.
Okay, let's move to item three point three. A proposed moratorium on the establishment and operation of new internet access businesses using simulated gambling devices. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Madam Chairman, um, this is yet another new use that we're dealing with and we need some additional time to consider it. Um, I've got Mark, um, excuse me, David Niskin in the audience who's gonna give the staff report on this item.
Thank you, John. Yeah, the resolution before you recommends that the city council adopt an interim urgency ordinance to create a moratorium on the establishment and operation of internet access businesses using simulated gambling devices. The city's municipal code, as it stands right now, reg, currently regulates bingo, but the computer stations that internet access businesses using simulated gambling devices are used in a different manner than coin operated video game machines other than, and other, other related video game equipment. Individuals generally pay a charge and then may occupy a station for multiple consecutive hours, which often results in, in long lines outside of these businesses. The lines outside, if unmitigated, can create a safe, can create safety issues by blocking public right of way and other unknown impacts on the surrounding area and businesses. The proposed mor, moratorium will have no effect on traditional internet cafe businesses that simply provide internet access to individuals even when the business charges for such services. The moratorium is tailored specifically to address businesses that provide sweepstakes promotion that depends on Vegas style gambling interfaces on the computers that provide inter, internet access as an incentive for individuals to visit the business and stay in that business for an extended period of time. Essentially, this moratorium targets a very specific business that has arisen as an attempt to offer opportunities to gambling without complying with state gambling laws. Current provisions in the city's municipal code fail to thoroughly address the impacts related to the location and manner of development, establishment and operation of, of this type of business and internet access businesses using simulated gambling devices in relation to, uh, public health, safety and welfare concerns, including but not limited to the impacts that these businesses may have on parking, surrounding uses and the community. This is, this can result in truancy problems where minors, if, if a lot of minors go to these establishments, which with video games, they tend to be more apt to going. Two, uh, can result in truancy issues, uh, from school by patronizing the internet access business during those times. According to the California Bureau of Gambling Control, the operation of internet access businesses using simulated gaming devices can sell, that sell internet time or phone cards in conjunction with the promotional sweepstakes are illegal online gambling operations. Gambling is permitted, as you know, in California by state law except for in card club establishments and on Indian or tribal reservations or property. Therefore, many of these businesses are engaged in legal activities where they sell internet time or phone cards with a promotional sweepstakes program through simulated gambling devices. And as these patrons are using these gambled, gambling devices with internet access, they have a, a chance to win sweepstakes or, or a prize. And these games frequently have the appearance of a casino style games out of chance, such as slot machines and to the extent that these promotional sweepstakes games are not illegal under state law. The city's zoning, zoning ordinance and municipal code do not spec, uh, specifically regulate them. Hence the reason why for this ordinance to give us time to evaluate those types of uses and look at what other cities are doing in the area as well as in California. The city must review its municipal code and zoning ordinance to address the impacts to the public safety, health and welfare for, for these businesses that offer sweepstakes style like games to the extent that they are illegal. As with the previous moratorium, this is exempt from SEQA under sections fifteen, three, three seven eight because it has no potential for resulting in a physical change to the environment directly or ultimately. This is gonna be regulating, uh, uses, uh, that are casino style like games that offer gambling a, along with internet access businesses. And like Jamie pointed out previously, this is a forty-five day moratorium and then the city council has the opportunity with a four fifths vote to extend the ordinance by a year and fifteen days and then after that for a year to complete or to, for a total of two years. And you have three options as with the last ordinance. You can adopt or make a recommendation with the, with the resolution to the city council to adopt the interim urgency ordinance. You can motion to adopt the resolution as amended by the commission, recommend to the city council to adopt their interim urgency ordinance as amended. Or you can reject the resolution not recommended to the city council that they adopt the interim urgency ordinance. Staff recommends that you go with option one and that is to adopt resolution twenty fourteen fifteen, recommending that the city council adopt interim urgency ordinance, creating a forty-five day moratorium on the establishment and operation of new internet access businesses using simulated gambling devices. Then I'll be here to answer any questions as John will probably will.
Thank you.
I'll answer questions before I open a public hearing.
This is, uh, I guess when someone comes to the table and says, I want to open up a, a, a internet access business simulating, uh, uh, gambling, this is where this gets flagged.
Yeah, it would, it would be like, it wouldn't be.
Internet cafe.
Yeah, versus an internet cafe where, yeah.
Cause that, that's a total difference being there as well.
It is, it is separate.
So it has to be stated. That it's a gambling type of a setup versus an internet cafe per se.
Can it be, I mean, does it have to be stated, like, fully or does it?
Well, I mean, the, the idea is there is a distinction.
Correct, yeah.
And just like with the other items, we're asking for timeout because we need tools to evaluate these types of land uses. So we can properly distinguish them in our ordinance code as a land use matter and know specifically where they should be permitted or not be permitted in certain areas. Or if they're permitted, under what terms and conditions they may be permitted.
I'm just looking at the language, uh, simulated gambling.
Yeah.
Keyword.
So someone come up with a, one of business license, how, how would that title be worded? Is that what you're looking at?
I, I don't know how it would be worded.
How would we know that that's a particular type of business that they're opening?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to, again, when someone applies for a business license, there is an opportunity for them to describe exactly what the business is. And at that point, um, you know, we have to make a determination is that, is that internet ga, gambling kind of a thing?
Or just an internet cafe.
Or internet cafe, because there is a distinction.
Of a hangout versus a.
Yeah.
Addiction.
It's also worth noting that the state legislature just passed a law actually out, outlawing specifically these types of businesses. So when that takes effect, that will also impact this. But this, um, this moratorium is also to hel, to help the city figure out how to regulate that in the future. So to determine what is an illegal business under the state legislature's new law. Well.
To me, this was, I mean, I see this one a lot more straightforward. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution, uh, number twenty fourteen dash fifteen. Uh, recommend the city council adopt the interim urgency ordinance to create a forty-five day moratorium uh, on the establishment of, operation of new internet access businesses using simulated gaming devices.
I second.
Commissioner Stewart? Commissioner Betoa?
Yes.
And Commissioner.
Yes.
We really don't have any, any new business other than, um, uh, oh, we got, you know, the downtown specific plan that we're working on. We've got housing element, we've got lots of other things we're working on. There, there are at least three different ordinances that are coming to you, which are commitments that the city made as part of the fourth housing element cycle, which was adopted almost, you know, five years ago, a little over five years ago, that are necessary in order for the city to be able to proceed with the next cycle of our housing element. So there's things like dealing with emergency homeless shelters, that type of stuff that need to be, should have been acted upon, you know, four or five years ago, quite frankly, because of what state laws as suggested. But anyway, so there's gonna be some, um, yeah, new, new ordinance codes coming to you to resolve those issues. I, I shared with the commission the new architecture for a new structure that they're gonna be building in the, in the Crossroads Commercial, um, per the DA that the city, um, adopted for that project. The obligation was just for staff review and approval because, but because it was at that intersection that's most prominent at the northeast corner of Oakdale and Clarabelle, I felt was appropriate for the commission to see that.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, I got feedback from you folks and I've already indicated to, uh, the project proponent that they could proceed. We've received sign applications for Red Robins. They want to, you know, make additional changes to their signage, probably as a franchise obligation. So we've got that as well. Um, I've shared with you my planning department report for the month of October. So you've got that. There's a long list of things that we're doing. We're not just sitting on our hands. We have a lot of things.
Good question.
We've got going on. Sure, absolutely. Ask away.
Number eight.
Yes, number eight.
Deal with the tattoo.
Dealing with the tattoos, yes.
It said, uh, it said released, uh, final version, release week of October sixth.
Yes, and that was, um, sit, counsel, that was a counsel. But we're still having, we're still working on the ordinance itself. We have some language, but it's not finalized.
We had a moratorium on that?
Yep, and it's still in, in force. And in fact, the city council is gonna be considering an extension of that moratorium on the twenty-eighth of this month.
Seventeen, air quality grant for bike paths.
Yep, yes. That, um, in fact, um, David could probably talk a little bit about this. Uh, what we're suggesting is in three separate applications, is an, is an application for free money to the air district and that would be for restart, restriping of Claus Road, um, from Patterson, within the city limits, from Patterson south, as far south as we can go, um, probably as far south as Clarabelle, to make, to make, um, Claus Road more user friendly, to make it more of a complete street, to, you know, accommodate vehicular traffic, of course, but also to allow for safe bicycle traffic as well.
And just to add to that, in the application, the three separate applications, I needed certain data. For instance, uh, the vehicle miles traveled or the average daily traveled, uh, for vehicles during, on Claus Road. So I just recently got that from Ken Anderson, our, our traffic consultant. And then I also, uh, needed to have a cost estimate, which Bill Cole's office did, that I got this, I got that this week. So the applications are coming together quite nicely and it's three separate because due to city limit constraints, the Claus Road from like Patterson to Kentucky, we're proposing to have the biking as it stands right now, just restriping it and maybe modifying the, with the width of it a little bit on the eastern west side. And then from Kentucky to, uh, like, right where Prince Andrew's Court is, right, kind of there. There's no like cross, there's no street there that I can identify quite easily. But it's gonna go on the, uh, west side because the east side is not within the city's jurisdiction. And then from St. Andrews all the way down to Clarabelle is gonna be on the east side to allow for some commuting for the, for the army ammunition plant. So that's how it stands right now and maybe in the future, once maybe those areas do come into the city's jurisdiction, we can modify that, but this is a really good start in trying to develop Claus Road into a little bit more, maybe a little bit more bike friendly, uh, area, especially for the workers that, or the commuters that go to the army ammunition plant. Their really, really only option right now is vehicle from, from Riverbank.
Application, there's no like approval date or when?
Uh, well, the application goes in and then the air board, which is San Joaquin Valley Air, Air Quality Pollution Controller. Johnny, can you correct me from making that? It's kind of a mouthful.
Right.
Anyway, um, the application goes in, it's a thirty day completeness review. So they talk to us and see if they need any more information. Then from there, if I remember correctly, it takes, I believe it's about sixty days for them to really fully review it. And then, then we schedule the actual work to be done. And then it's a kind of a reimbursement system. So we do it in basically phases or quarter, quarter phases. And then we do the work, we submit the documents to the air board and then they reimburse us for that money. And then we go from the next.
So the hope is we have, we have, uh, grant awards sometime next spring and we're able to do it next summer. And again, it's free money, so, you know, it, it's, it's highly competitive. Um, it's first come, first served and as long as the money is available, then we can apply. And they're really looking for ready, ready, ready to go, ready to build projects. So, um, we'd wanted to do some work on Patterson Road, but we have some right of way constraints. So, um, we're not giving up on, we're not giving up on that, but we're going with a project that's ready to go.
You have to have funds within the city in order to do it to be reimbursed for it.
Yep, but the idea is we're not gonna spend city, we're not gonna suggest to send, spend city funds until we've got, we know we've got a grant award. Right. Cause, cause the city manager will tell you that we have no money available.
Okay, thirty-eight.
Oh, look, I'm sorry, thirty-eight, okay.
Ordinance for facilitating, uh, special need groups.
Yeah, that's, that's, um, actually, that's one of the ordinances that's gonna come back to you. That was part of the fourth cycle of, um, as it says, planning commission meeting in November, fourth cycle of the housing element update.
Have a moratorium for these particular type of facilities here.
No, actually, we, um, these are, these are primarily, these are policies that are part of our housing element that were, um, put into the housing element to comply with SB five. And the reality is that with, according to that law, we had one, we had one year to do it after housing element adoption, which was almost five years ago, so. It takes a little bit of time, I guess. But anyway, so we're cleaning it up. We're, we, we have to get these, these matters resolved before we submit for our next review. Otherwise, otherwise the state makes it a little more complicated for us. Same, same type of deal, reasonable. Reasonable accommodation ordinance was an obligation, uh, you know, as part of the last housing element update. David, do you wanna talk more, a little bit more about that? What does that mean?
Yeah, reasonable accommodation is an ordinance where if there is a specific, uh, like variance or modification to our zoning code that needs to be met or needs to be done for a special needs group or special needs person to live reasonably, then this ordinance makes it so that's kind of streamlined. They can, they can apply for a reasonable accommodation and say, "We need a setback that's a little bit, little bit outside of what the zoning code says", then this application allows us to do that without having to go through a variance process or an exception process, which is a much more lengthy, much more cons, it, it's considered a constraint to those groups, special needs groups. So this is a, a, a really good ordinance and it, and it's part of the SB two kind of wave of, of areas, which includes, uh, includes emergency and tran, and supportive and transitional housing. So reasonable accommodation's very good to have. Which right now, City Modesto operates with one, Turlock operates with one, pretty much most of the cities in the valley. But, uh, Riverbank is gonna have one pretty soon here.
And that's all I have.